All right.
All right, it's January 4th, 2022, 7:31 PM, gonna call the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Members present, uh, hang on, let me get this box on my face. All right. Members present Doug Roberts, John Teahan, Rebecca Sanoski, Bob Chabot, and we'll seat Lori Sempervahn for Joe Hall. All right, let's see what we have. C, applications to be received, APZ-21-24, special permit for signage at Loves Travel Stop, 3-Polster Road applicant Betty Torrance and owner, Loves Travel Stop and Country Stores Incorporated.
Um, so this is a public, uh, it's a special permit, so requires a hearing, so we're receiving it tonight and then we'll get it scheduled for hearing at the next meeting and we'll get the, um, working with the applicant to do the butters notices, put the sign on the property for the next meeting.
Is this the whole deal with whatever's gonna be there for restaurants, the whole shebang?
This will be the whole signage plan.
Okay. All right. Uh, E, item E, new business, A, bond release, 11 St. Merritt Circle Extension.
So, this goes back a while. Um, there is, the St. Merritt Circle Extension was approved many, many years ago. It's basically an additional, uh, as part of a re-subdivision, I believe, some of you may or may not remember it. And there were some improvements that were required. There was a bond that was taken and it's been sitting. And, um, the property owner was under the impression that there was a number of outstanding items that were preventing the bond from being released. Um, so I met with the owner and the engineer and, um, basically, we went through everything and I had, um, Joe Dillon go out and, and you'll see in the packet and I can kind of review it if you want. Do an inspection. Everything has basically been done. It's been done for many, 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 many years. Um, we've got the asphalt, the deeds were recorded in the town clerks for the road, you know, everything is, everything has been done. Um, but for some reason, it's just been sitting. So, um, this release would be for the final amount of about $5,817, which has been sitting in, um, a, a bank account waiting for a real long time. So it's just kind of cleaning it up.
So do we have to make a decision or you're just informing us?
So you guys, because the, the bond came in, it's through the commission, you guys have to basically make the motion to do the release.
All right. I'll make a motion to, uh, to release the bond for 11 St. Merritt Circle Extension.
Second, Lori Sempervahn.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great.
That's good news.
Yeah, as since I'm the treasurer, I will, I will get on that, but I probably have to wait until I'm back from my trip at the end of February.
Okay, well, I can, I can let her know that it was approved and, and that, you know, we'll be starting the administrative process in our, and then she should be fine with that. It's, it's been like 10 years.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, item B, under new business, review of draft special development district regulations.
Okay, so, um, I think we talked about this in concept, you know, a couple of meetings ago. And I don't know, did I show you guys a sort of like a process chart? Did I, we go through that? Uh, kind of like with some, no, um, let me see. Cause I can, okay, so we've talked about sort of generally, just to set the table. We've talked about a couple of projects which are in various stages of, of, um, I don't know what you, what you'll call it, confidence, right? Some of them are just kicking the tires, others are in preliminary design, et cetera. Um, but because of the way the world works now, from, from a finance standpoint, but also from a tenant standpoint, a lot of people don't want, um, to hear, okay, yeah, so sign the contract and then we'll go through the, the land use process because that could take four to six months. Um, on top of that, particularly with some of the properties that we have now and we're looking at potentially having developed, there are some design constraints related to wetlands or ledge, topography, et cetera. And, um, so we want to be able to provide a little bit of design flexibility so that people can give us higher end design for things like, uh, electric vehicle preparedness, uh, green infrastructure, um, and, you know, pedestrian improvements, et cetera. Um, and our regulations don't really provide that. And the way that it's typically done is through a development district, which is a floating zone. And so you, you basically file an application to land the zone on the particular property in accordance with the, the criteria that we have, that we adopt. And then you're afforded the, the sort of the flexibility that is in that district. Um, so it is essentially a very tailored, for lack of a better word, um, it's, it's a lot like, people always say spot zoning, but it isn't because it's, it's in compliance with obviously the P O C D and it's allowed by statute and law. But particular with what I have on the Harat, what I'm thinking we may be looking at, I think it's, it's prudent for us to do this as a next step. Um, so I have a reg that I've drafted. It's, um, fairly substantial. It's about 10 pages. Um, and then I have a process time, sort of a, a process chart which explains the steps. So we can go through the whole thing or I can show you this, just the step by step. What do you think?
Why, why don't you give us a, uh, an overall description? I wouldn't mind stopping by the office and picking up a copy from PEG.
Yeah, and I can, I mean, for something like this, certainly we can, you know, if you want, we can let, do like a, a hard copy, mailing or printed or whatever. Um, but, so, um, again, the other problem that we have is that when, when folks come to design for us, they don't necessarily know the end user and what they're gonna require. And that makes it very hard because we require 100% design plans because we want to know if you're gonna have 18 parking spaces or 25. And we want to know, you know, is your building gonna be 25,000 square feet or 27? So that creates a lot of challenges for them to sink 100 grand into the design and site plan and then find out from their tenant, no, we don't want that, we want this. So, basically, the process would be, um, they come in and they have a pre-application conference with staff. So we would go over, Chris and I would sit down, you know, potentially loop in the health department or Jim Rupert as building official and just go over the project. Make sure that it met the basic criteria and, you know, um, understand, you know, what they're looking to do so that, so that it actually requires like a pre-staff conference so that we can figure out what's going on. The next step would be for them to submit their application for a zone change and then that is also required to include a concept plan. And under the traditional process, the concept plan, um, is about 60 to 70% design. So they're gonna tell us where the parking generally is, where the building will be, about how big it is, here's the buffers, here's the road, here's the topography, but they're not gonna say, we're gonna have 151 parking spaces and the road, you know, there's a little bit of flexibility there so that maybe they go retail, maybe they go personal service or, you know, there's some flex so that they can not have to design it twice. You guys would review the master plan, that's called a master plan, which is the zone change and the concept plan and decide, um, if you thought it was appropriate, you would approve that. And they would then have the, the zone on the property and then they'd have the concept plan, which they could then use to workshop with tenants and go out and get financing and, and et cetera, et cetera. When they have everything nailed down and they know that they're gonna have, um, you know, okay, I know we're gonna have, uh, 55,000 square foot distribution facility. Then they do their 100% design and they come back to planning and zoning for a site plan review. The site plan review doesn't require a public hearing, but if they deviate from the 70% concept plan, then they, they basically have to go back, right? If they say, well, we're gonna do distribution and then they show up and say, actually, we're gonna do a truck stop. Or we said 50,000 square feet, but now we want 100,000, right? If there's a major changes, they go to the beginning again. But if they, if they show up at the finish line and give us a site plan that shows them building more or less what they perceived concept approval for, it's a site plan approval by this commission, you review the regs, make sure it meets the requirements. There's no public hearing, but again, the use and the design and the location have already been approved with the public hearing for the zone change and the concept plan. The key to this is they can very quickly guarantee speed to market for construction for the tenant. Um, because they know that the site plan approval is administrative and they, they can, they can depend on that timeline. So, that's, that's more or less the process. We define the uses, the location. Because this is not, this is outside of the standard zoning map and process, you have the complete discretion to deny it simply because you want to. Um, the courts have, have held that if you don't like it, you can deny it, it doesn't matter why, you have complete discretion for a, a development district. Um, we decide what constitutes modification. It's complete flexibility. But, you know, one of the things that I have built in is if they design a lead building, the lead is green infrastructure, it's, you know, solar, water, energy, et cetera, we're giving them a 5% uh, bonus on coverage. Um, to, because the lead buildings are expensive. So we're giving them additional 5% because they're gonna spend all this money to make the building less intensive on the environment and because we're an area that pulls from wells, et cetera. You know, that's an important component of, of, I think longevity of some of these sites. But I'll stop talking for now.
We, we gotta make sure we do a good job, like making sure that whatever is proposed is in the spirit of that special development district, especially without another public hearing. Cause that, that it, this, if we don't do a good job on this, has a tendency to really upset the people that live down there. Yeah, we gotta be really, do our due diligence and make sure we're all on the same page as the commission.
Yep, that, yeah, and, and the, the way that I, if there's somebody, this is, this is different. I mean, this, this process is different and I'll, towns do it, but not a lot of towns. Um, and the, the way that I would explain it to someone who was skeptical or was concerned is that all of the oversight still exists as normal. They still submit a zone change, we still do a public hearing, they still have to tell us what the uses are during the public hearing. The only thing that doesn't have the public hearing is the final design. So everybody still gets to, to speak.
I, I have a question, Mike. Uh, looking at how Dollar General went, uh, if we go to this, your proposal, does that still give us an opportunity to suggest to the, uh, people that are developing this? Uh, things that we would like to see as we did with Dollar General?
Yes, so, um, this provides far more discretion on your part. So you can tell them, we want the building to be pink or, or it doesn't fly. Um, because, because this is an additional layer of review, whereas with the special permit process traditionally, you've already said that the use is allowable, right? We already know that the retail building is allowed, it's just a matter of going through the process. This is completely discretionary. So you have far more flexibility and actually, I have built in some, some more, um, concise and beefed up standards related to encouraging really strong design. Um, but the other key component to this is, this is not gonna become the norm. This will be used for, for key larger scale developments, not, so this will apply, you know, we'll set a threshold, it may be five acres, it may be 10 acres. Um, so a Dollar General, Phelps Plaza, uh, Dunkin' Donuts, you know, those properties and projects are not large enough to come under this. This is a large scale development that, that is gonna need that flex.
At what point does the, uh, planning and zoning and inland wetlands, uh, inter, interact with the, uh, people that are, uh, proposing the development?
So, the, the, after the pre-app conference with staff, then they submit to you the zone change and the concept plan. So we schedule the hearing and all of those things happen with you guys, just like normal. Um, and the, because they don't have the approval to build anything until you approve the site plan at the very last step, they can use, they can take that concept plan and while they're working with finding, you know, banks and tenants and, and design, they can go through the wetland process and then, then they come back to you with the site plan. Um, so it provides them again with that real tangible endorsement from the town and that, you know, and then they go through the wetland process and come back to you for site plan.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Mike, do you define the tolerances between what's acceptable from their concept plan to their final plan?
Yes.
Like you, so like you square footage and parking spaces. So, okay. So you, go ahead.
I have basically the master plan, what we're calling the master concept plan requirements for, for this traditional process includes an overview explaining the intent of the project and why they're seeking the approval. The concept plan is, is required to be, um, one or more sheets depicting the proposed schematic design, including but not limited to uh, the identification and, and location of proposed uses, existing and proposed building footprints, proposed public and private streets, sidewalks, pedestrian walkways, rights of way and parking, landscape areas, including the location of any proposed buffers and information regarding the provisions for water sewer, drainage, stormwater utilities and any public or private open space or conservation areas. Um, they're required to provide schematic architectural renderings, including floor plans or photographs of similar construction and a data table to indicate the lot coverage setbacks, frontage, floor area and parking.
Okay, so, but, and you're also basically having them meet a certain requirement as far as the tolerance goes between concept and final plans, right? So like square footage, if, like you use, you know, 27,000 versus 25,000. If they came up with a concept plan and they want to do 50,000, then what's acceptable? Is 75,000 acceptable or within 10% or? So you define all the thresholds with all those requirements?
Right, yep. So we have, um, a section that is written which basically, uh, explains what the modifications are. And so I, I, I've used this as a baseline. So an increase, uh, modifications would substantially alter the proposed or existing uses within an ex, in a, within the district shall require, um, basically approval by the commission for any of the following. One, an increase in the building size, height, um, or impervious coverage by more than 5%. A single change in use to more than one tenant space and or unit for a proposed use or a proposed use of more than 50% of the existing square footage. Um, and any proposed site change which would decrease the amount of green space by more than 2,000 square feet or, or any change in use which would establish an accessory use, accessory building or accessory structure which is in excess of 5,000 square feet. And, and we can make that, those things, you know, more or less additional, you know, whatever, but those are just kind of where I started.
Okay. Um, yeah, I mean, on my time on planning and zoning, there's been a lot of sensitivity as far as, um, water, water use and, and disposal, basically. Um, so I would, you know, I guess there's gotta be some high sensitivities to those two things for these, you know, rather large developments.
That, you know, that is, um, another key is that we have, we're all very concerned about that. But our, our regulations are kind of, kind of laxed as far as the level of design that we require people to, to engineer their stormwater to. We, we, we have them, you know, keep it on site, but we don't really put them in a position of having to clean it very much. Um, and so this also requires, um, low impact development standards for things like stormwater so that they're actually working to clean and treat the water before they release it back into the ground on their property. Rather than just saying, we're gonna put it in a basin in the back and let it evaporate, you know, so. So I'm trying to move in that direction of, hey, we're giving you some flexibility in the design, but that's because we want a better design. That's the goal.
Okay.
Mike, I have a question with some of these, um, bigger properties that this could entail. Does that have anything to do? Um, this is, I'm gonna throw my other hat on fire suppression, any cisterns or other ways that they have to supply water? Since Wellington really doesn't have a water system that a lot of these places would, in some of the cities and larger towns. Uh, is, is there something in this that they have to provide? Fire suppression water available to the local fire departments should anything happen? I know like FedEx has that big pond, they have fire pumps to pump out of the pond. But anything bigger than FedEx probably needs its own, even developments, I know a lot of the towns around us have cisterns that have to be, every so many houses in a development have to have a cistern in the ground.
Yeah, um, so when they got to the point where they were, they, they had confirmed the total size of the building, right? We know because the, the use of the building, what's in, what's inside of it and how big it is are obviously important when you're talking about fire. They would have to basically demonstrate to the satisfaction of you guys that they had a solution that worked. And, and as part of the hearing process, we would, you know, absolutely be able to seek guidance from the fire department as to whether or not the solution that they were proposing was adequate and workable.
Well, they're obviously gonna have to have a sprinkler protected facility, depending what it is, especially a large facility. If there's racking and everything in said facility, it's gotta meet the density. They wouldn't be able to get insurance without that.
Yeah, but I, it's hard when we can't bring the wa, you know, we have to bring the water with us essentially, right? Cause you can't hook up to a pipe in the ground and, and, um, yeah, so you guys have complete discretion that if you don't feel comfortable that there's gonna be an, an appropriate way for to fight a fire there, um, you know, that would all come out during the hearing. Oh, you're muted.
I just didn't know if there was anything in these regulations because these will tend to be bigger places that we can have, they have to have something in there. Either they dig their own pond or something so that there is water available, so to speak.
Um, let me figure out the best place to put it. I'm wondering if the concept plan shall include an overview, utilities, blah, 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 data table, conceptual site plans. So let me add as a new section to concept site plans something related to something about, yeah.
I don't remember, um, is the water that goes to hall school, does it stop at hall school? Doesn't go beyond that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I'll tweak the wording here, but I've added, I've added this as a requirement to the concept plan that they provide. The, uh, the proposed method to demonstrate adequate fire suppression. But I'll fix the, the wording, but it, so that will get it to you in the front end of the process.
I would, I, I've been to a fire out of town recently and that town had, if anyone was putting in a development of, I, I wanna say just five houses, they had to put a 25,000 gallon cistern in the ground. The fire department would have to refill it when they pulled from it, but, uh, some of these things, you, you need water around and Wellington has water, but we don't have water in the sense of a big location.
Yeah, I'll, I'll tweak, I'll make the language a little less ugly, but, but I've, I've included it in there as a requirement, so we'll get that information upfront. So, um, you know, we're, this is informal discussion, the next step for us would be to actually consider it legitimately to get you guys a copy of the regs, send it to CROG and schedule a hearing and, and go through the process. So if you're, if you're feeling like you're willing to consider it formally, then we'll, we'll give it an application number, refer it and schedule a hearing.
I'd like to see a copy of the, of the, all the regs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Something with, something I would think we could move on relatively quickly after we each have a copy and read it and ask any questions we may have.
I would agree.
Do you want that before we schedule it or do you just want us to mail you all hard copies in advance of the, the hearing?
I think it'd be nice to get hard copies and we don't put it on our next meeting, but maybe the meeting after gives us a little time to digest it and make any changes we may want to make. So, you know, when's our next meeting? What's the next date?
18th.
Okay, probably the one after that is the one we would want to have the hearing on, that gives us time to circle back around with each other.
Yeah, so if, um, just, just thinking timeframe wise, we have, I have to give CROG 35 days. So if you're feeling like the general nuts and bolts are okay and you, and you don't want to make any substantial changes, I can, I can refer it or we can just wait till the 18th and then schedule it for the end of February. Doesn't make a difference to me.
Why don't we wait till the end of February?
Okay.
I agree. Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, we'll get this out to you, um, in advance of the 18th meeting. We'll have another discussion to workshop any changes at the meeting on the 18th and we'll schedule the hearing in Feb, February.
Perfect.
Good.
For me.
That way everybody gets a chance to weigh in. If somebody thinks we missed something, we can have a good discussion about it. It's pretty important stuff, so we wanted, we want to make sure we do this right.
I agree. All right, we will do that.
Okay, item C, review of draft bond policy.
So, um, I, I can share my screen if you want, um, and, and we included it in the, the link. There, there's a very simple, um, bond policy, uh, Chris worked on looking at what other towns have and pulled, you know, the, the, the skeleton together based on what we thought made sense and what other towns were doing. Um, and then we kind of tweaked it, I think, to, to make it fit what we had talked about. Um, so it's, it's fairly simple in that this is how you submit a bond, this is how you release a bond and that the only people that can make modifications to the policy are, are the commission. Um, and I'm happy to, like I said, if you want to go through it, you want me to read sections or whatever, just let me know.
I don't particularly care to go through the whole thing, but if someone else does, I'll certainly along for the ride.
No, I don't need a, uh, I don't need to, uh, go through the entire thing.
I think the key is that there are two things that are, that are, that are key, uh, points. One, we've set the threshold at $10,000. Um, so if it's anything in excess of that, then, um, you know, there's a, that's the threshold which allows for a letter of credit essentially. Um, if it's less than 10,000, it's gotta be a cash or certified check. And if it's $10,000 or more, it needs to be in comp, we, we're also gonna require that they sign a bond agreement which we can workshop with staff, the town engineer, town attorney, et cetera. Um, and then, um, the, the, the types of bonds. So we've basically said cash, certified check or letter of credit are what we are willing to accept. And the modification line says that they have any other type of financial guarantee not listed, then they need to prove to the satisfaction of you guys, but also the finance department that, and or the town attorney that it's acceptable form of payment.
Um, I, I.
Bitcoin, right?
No, I mean, a couple of years ago, we probably would have been pleased to have had that because it would have been, you know, the interest. because it would have been, you know, the interest, but no.
I, I like it. It's, it's a little bit vague, which I think is good about the amounts because generally the bonds are two thousand dollars, but you said it depends on various things. I've only seen in recent years, two thousand dollar bonds. And it, but it may be you're leaving that specifically open because there may be circumstances where somebody has to pay a five thousand dollar bond or something like that and you, and you want to leave that open. Is that correct?
Yeah, so like, one of the things that we might have required for, for a project like Dollar General is for, you know, six months, we want a landscape protection bond to make sure that everything doesn't die in, in the summertime and that may be, you know, five thousand bucks.
Yeah, I, I like it and it's, and it's what, I mean, I think it fits our concerns in the finance office. And it, it has something, it would give us something on the books that would give everybody in town an idea of what's expected.
The, the next step for us, if you guys like it and you basically vote to, to adopt this as the operating policy is that, you know, I'll send this to Haller and Sage just so they can look at it and, and make sure that they don't think we've missed anything. And, and if they're good with it, then we'll start implementing it.
So do you want, do you want us to like, uh, make a decision out of tonight or put it on the next agenda after Howard and Sage sees it?
Whatever you prefer. I'm fine with either way.
I, I don't have a problem moving on it tonight.
Yeah, I would, I would, I'd be happy to. I'd be happy to move on it tonight also.
Someone want to make a motion?
Um, I will, well, I don't know, maybe I should not be the one. I don't know if there's a conflict of interest, not really. It's not a personal conflict of interest. I just am the treasurer. I don't know if that's, if that matters.
You want to, you want that, you want to make it then, John? I saw your hand up.
Sure, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll move that we, uh, adopt the, uh, I'm sorry, the, uh, losing my thread here.
New bond policy?
New bond policy is written, yes.
You seconded Andy?
I second that, yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Lori says aye.
All right, uh, let us know if the lawyer want to make any changes to it, Mike.
Yep, if there's any, if there's any, okay, any changes, I'll bring it back and show you the final.
All right, thank you. All right, no unfinished business tonight. Approval of minutes, uh, December seventh, twenty twenty one.
Move to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, I'm gonna abstain.
Okay.
I just don't have my information on whether I was there at that meeting and I wasn't able to look at everything.
I think you were, but.
Yeah, I just, I'm traveling and I wasn't able to look at it.
Okay. All right, item H, correspondence. A land use agency's training guidelines. Is this for the new state law, Mike?
Yeah, this is from OPM. It's just, uh, was released just recently related to the training, which, which doesn't take effect until twenty twenty three. So you have plenty of time, but I just wanted to, to pass that along.
How, how much training is involved?
Um, it's not a lot. It's basically, hold on, I can tell you.
Four hours every year, every other year?
I think that's what it is.
That's not, that's nothing, okay.
Is the, Mike, is the state gonna come out with a schedule for when all these different, uh, training sections are going to be available?
So, yeah, the, the focus and the, the goal as part of this, you know, it was funny. I'm on, I, I'm on the membership director for CASIO and, um, early on, OPM or CCM was, I think, thinking this will be a, a great way for us to boost our membership and they were looking like they wanted to take over the management of all this commissioner training and the tracking and et cetera. And I think once they realized that any one given town could have a hundred commissioners that they would need to track, it pivoted completely. So you'll see that CASIO and a bunch of other organizations are going to be part of developing, you know, the, the process and looking at trainings. So I suspect very strongly that this will not be an issue. And I think we've even talked that, you know, Haller and Sage could probably put one on for their member commissions regarding these things if we really had to.
Okay, so, uh, what's the penalty for somebody that doesn't take the training?
Yeah, you know, that's a very good question. My suspicion is though, I haven't seen anything on it, is that when you got to a, some towns have, have ordinances and, and in their, things in their charter, which says that the legislative body can actually just remove you. But I, my suspicion is, because obviously Wellington does not, that it probably would mean if you were reappointed or, or couldn't go for reelection or something like that. The, the concern is if, if you guys approve an application, you know, let's say you approve it, you know, three to two, but one of the commissioners who votes yes isn't, doesn't have the training. There's a concern that on an appeal, the judge would say that's actually a denial. But that's total, there's, there is absolutely no enforcement mechanism on paper.
All right, well, hopefully we, we don't have any issues with that, so. But you'll, you'll contact us when there's schedules available and trainings and so forth, so we can decide when we're gonna do it.
Yeah, there, there are some towns with commissions that are just so, such a liability in so many ways that I think that's where this came from, but yeah, you guys have nothing.
Who's, what part, what part of the state is going to be keeping score on who's certified and who isn't? That's always a challenge.
Yeah, you know, I suspect, because we, we talked about this when we were working on this legislation. I brought this up at a meeting, I think I might have mentioned it to you guys. And I said, tracking the various certification cycles of every member and, and, you know, when they were appointed and et cetera, is, is a big deal for towns that have a lot of boards. And there was, you know, not a lot of sympathy for that. So I suspect the towns are going to have to track for their boards individually.
I, I would just like to comment that when I used to hold a pesticide applicator's license, it seems like, uh, DEEP, uh, did a fair job of managing, uh, renewals of that. And it seems like they did the, as so far as I've seen, they're, they do, they've done the best job of any state agency in following through on that.
So, so Mike, I attended that, um, training at, well, it used to be, um, Central Connecticut State University, but then it was all remote last year because of COVID. So does, does that type of training apply or is there some sort of other specific training that they're talking about putting together?
Yeah, so they haven't, I, so they have, we've got the guidelines which say what the training has to include, but they haven't come up with, here's what applies. But I, when you were talking about that, you know, my ultimate recommendation, and frankly, this was, this all came to be as part of the desegregate CT platform. This was part of that, this, the idea that if commissions are more informed on land use policies and land use issues, they'll make better decisions, which will translate to better projects and blah, blah, blah. And so when we were meeting with them, I basically suggested that the Wesleyan Connecticut Bar Training that Doug's referring to, which happens every other year, if that could apply, most people would be fine. So I think that's the intent.
Okay. Yeah, for anyone that hasn't taken that, I, I've done it once in person and I did it last year, you know, with the remote program and it is excellent. The attorneys put on a very, very good, pulled together very good presentations and it's interesting what would they, what they come up with. And I think last year they were saying because they did it remote, um, they're able to get much more, the audiences are much, much larger. I think like something like five hundred people attended last year. It was way up there.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a great, it's, yeah, it's probably the best training available in the state and, you know, we'll send anybody, any of, any of you that want to go, you know, we'll pay for you.
When it's coming up, will you notify us, Mike?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be, um, it'll probably be in twenty twenty three. It'll, it's usually in March, it will be all virtual. So yeah, absolutely.
All right. Good. All right, item I, uh, public comment. The commission will hear brief comments at this time from anyone wishing to speak. No business can, can be conducted here or can any comments be made about any items on the agenda? Do we have any members of the public tonight? One more time, did we have any members of the public? Apparently not.
Just, just a question, I'm not from the public, but, uh, how did you, how did your, uh, your survey go, Mike? For the, um, affordable housing?
Question.
So, um, we're going to close it out, I think, end of this week or next week. We have, I, I think about ninety people.
That's it, huh?
Yeah, we've, we've had, um, some fairly, like, we shared it through the town's Facebook and through Wellington Economic Development, so I can kind of see how many people see the post. We've had some pretty good engagement as far as people who have seen it with their eyes, but a, a couple of other towns are doing this too and, and it's getting buried in everything related to COVID and test kits and, you know, it's just not what people are focusing on.
Are there any questions on that about, uh, the, the, uh, accessory dwelling units and so forth?
Not, not particularly because we know that we have to make those changes.
Yeah.
So, you know, there, there are ways to make the accessory dwelling units apply towards the affordable housing count, but we haven't asked their specific thoughts on ADUs.
Is that, that, that's one thing that seems to me that would have a big impact on people's perceptions and everything, depending how those are done and like somebody parks a camper in their front lawn, you're gonna have some people like breathing in a bag, you know, if they're next door to that.
Yeah, so.
I think there's only one question that kind of relates to that because it gives a choice. You have to gauge, I don't know, one to ten or one to five, uh, what, what would be most important to you and what would be least? And I think there's one part of that where it's, uh, you know, like a accessory building on a, a private property.
The, the statutes, um, say two things related to that. One, we can very clearly prevent anyone from trying to use a mobile home or something like that as an accessory dwelling unit, but we can also.
Can't roll up and park it on the curb?
No. And the statute also says that if you add an accessory, you know, we need to have ten percent affordable housing. So rough numbers, if we have a hundred, a hundred housing units in town and we add an accessory dwelling unit, accessory dwelling units don't count against you for your total housing stock. Because what they don't want is towns to do all this promotion of, of accessory dwelling units for families, you know, for their mother in laws or disabled adult son or something and have that take them further away from the ten percent affordable housing you need to have because now they're adding units. So the, the statute says if you add an accessory, an accessory dwelling unit, that doesn't take you back for your ten percent threshold. The units basically don't count. Because they don't want to create that, yeah, they don't, they didn't want to have people get into a bind with having to choose which one to prioritize.
And we're currently seven percent, correct?
Uh, in, yeah, seven and change, I think.
Okay.
There's a new law about accessory dwellings, right? It doesn't need.
Yes, you have to accept them.
Well, no public hearing at least, I guess.
But they need to be safe. You can't have something that's gonna catch on fire and they kill people, you know, that, that sort of thing.
Well, that, that's good. That was the reason the rule went long ago was because people were not doing it safely, so.
Well, that's why somebody parks a camper and they, they're using a furnace that's not intended to run every day to heat the thing year round, uh, you know, those sorts of things. That's, it's a little scary. All right. Anything, item J, staff report discussion?
Um, the only thing that I'll mention is, is that, um, I think I mentioned this last time. You know, we, we've obviously moved forward with, with, um, an enforcement action against the property on River Road. You can track all that online now, it has a docket number, so.
Still a mess.
Yep, um, so the return date was the, um, like the twenty seventh of December. So we should be getting a, a scheduled date with the court soon, very soon.
Okay, that's good. All right, that, that's it for nothing more.
Um, the only other thing I'll mention is with, we're getting into February, so we'll be starting, uh, at the next meeting, I think. All of the sand and gravel, um, one year renewals.
Okay, at Becker and.
Desiato, et cetera, yep.
Okay. All right, so it's, let's see, eight seventeen, meeting adjourned. Have a, have a good night, everyone.